Good evening. I'm going to open the April 9 meeting of the Newton Planning Board, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to welcome our new planning board member, Michael Andrews, to the board.
Welcome.
And the first item on the agenda is the public hearing for the stormwater site plan regulation changes. The board has gone over this quite a few times over the last several months. And as of the last meeting, I think we decided that this was good to go for a vote tonight. But I'll open it up to the board to see if anybody else has any more input to this or if it's going to go forward the way it is. Anybody?
Do you want a quick overview as to...
Sure. That would be good. Thank you.
Where we started and where we ended up?
Sure.
That might be helpful. So we originally started working on the upgrades to the site plan regulations for your stormwater due to the federal stormwater MS4 permit and the requirements that Newton is under to meet that permit. One of the requirements is that you actually upgrade your stormwater regulations for both site plan and subdivision regulations. So we started with site plan regulations. This will apply only to commercial properties or non-residential properties and any multifamily residential properties because that's what your site plan requirements apply to. Basically, we are upgrading the minimum threshold for stormwater treatment originating from new sites being developed. And when sites are redeveloped, to a certain extent, they will also have to meet new stormwater regulations. These are compatible with the MS4 permit. So you are more or less under the gun to have to do something to this degree within the next year. This used the Southeast Watershed Alliance Model Stormwater Ordinance, which we tweaked to Newton's specific items. But it is a very similar version to what many other towns surrounding you have adopted. But again, designed for Newton, not just mimicking from other towns. And it will bring you into compliance with the MS4 permit. It'll also be proactive in preventing additional stormwater pollution from sites more or less sort of a year early. So you are less liable from the town perspective from stormwater getting onto town-owned roads and properties and also reducing the stormwater itself getting into waterways. So this will replace... We are proposing to add a definition to the definitions section of the site plan regulations and then fully replacing sections 7.2, 0.3, and 7.2.4 with what has been presented in this draft. We've been going over this since approximately July. So I think we've gone through this line by line, taken some comments from the Conservation Commission. I know Roger had a lot of good input. And it's also been reviewed by Mike Vignali, your town engineer.
Thank you. All right. If nobody on the board has any input... Does anyone in the audience have any input to that? No? Okay. Thank you. So I guess I'm...
And there's no public here, so we can't have public comment. There's only two public people.
So I guess if there are no comments and no input from the board, I guess we need a motion to adopt this into the regulations.
First, we want to close the public hearing? Or do you want...
We close that first?
We have to close it first? All right. Okay. I'll close the public hearing on the stormwater regulation changes. And now I'm going to ask for a motion to accept this.
I'll move that we adopt the stormwater management changes on the 10-page document? 9-page document? As presented.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second. And also, then we're going to have to renumber all of the other following sections.
That's editorial.
Right. Yes.
Just as a correction, you're not going to have to renumber them just because we have these going under the current subsections. Other than the definitions section will have to be renumbered.
But pages will be...
But I'll help Gail read.
Everything after 7.2.4... Seeing that we're eliminating 7.2.4, what is now 7.2.5 will have to get renumbered.
We'll get them renumbered so they are appropriate and all references are correct.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
All right.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. All right. I'm going to take this a little bit out of order because I believe I know why the two people out in the audience are out there. We have had some correspondence back and forth with the town attorney looking over the language of the driveways for the new subdivision. And he was saying that it should be... They should have had a waiver required... They should have had a waiver request. And so we talked to the town engineer and we talked to the road agent. And neither one of them has any issue with the way the driveways are. And I'm not talking about the language right now, but the fact that they don't believe that any kind of easement is necessary because it's on a state road. And the town attorney says, "The fact that the curb cut is on a state road is important concerning the driveway cut onto the road, and the town is out of that issue. But the internal configuration of the driveways is part of the subdivision process and is not affected whether the road is state or town. The decision seems to address the type issues a waiver would address, and the planning board is the final arbiter of the waiver requirement." And Jen has some input on that.
The way the driveway, the shared driveway language reads in your subdivision regulations, if there is a lot that is going to be more than four houses sharing a driveway, as a common driveway, then the applicants can propose a reduced width of the driveway that then conforms to town standards other than that width. But because what was proposed on this application for 141 South Main Street was only a driveway with less than that, no waiver was necessary nor did it need to be requested. I think there's just a misinterpretation of what the requirement was. So I think the condition has actually been met. I think the condition of the approval has actually been met.
One thing that we may want to address in the future is... At one stage, it refers to shared driveways with two dwelling units. At one point, it's shared driveways with four dwelling units, leaving the number three, which is what this is.
Right.
Okay. It's neither fish nor fowl.
It's sort of in limbo.
So what we need to do is we need to either say, okay, up to three, no waiver, four and above, but...
The regulation is poorly written.
What is that number in here?
Honestly, I was just looking for it.
It's on page 13.
Page 13?
Yeah. It's...
Of subdivision?
It's in subdivision, Sandy.
Because if you look at that, the first part of that is really confusing.
Yes.
Because the first piece of the sentence is, "As part of any waiver request." And it doesn't say what you're requesting a waiver for.
In this case, no waiver was requested because one wasn't necessary.
But no, because the whole... The next section talks about the four driveways. But the beginning of this is always talking about any shared driveway, which would include two houses.
Right.
Correct. But as part of any waiver request, you have to do these. But there was no waiver requested because they didn't need one.
Right.
They weren't asking for relief from anything. So no waiver was needed.
That's why I'm recommending that, now that we've taken care of stormwater, we may want to look at that section again.
Right. I think that's where the town attorney is maybe a little confused because it does say one thing over here and one thing over there.
Right.
But the other thing is that in that, we required a statement relieving the town of liability.
Correct.
But that section i actually expands on where we're relieving liability of. It's not only liability to maintain the driveway, but also that if, because the driveway is not maintained, emergency vehicles can't get access.
Right. And the town won't be held liable.
Right.
Correct.
And that sort of gets to the other point about that may need to be expanded.
Right. But right now, we need...
And cleaned up.
Let's back up for just a second. We need to focus on... Jen has said that they meet the qualifications, that they don't need to ask for a waiver. So that's the issue right now. It's not the language for the driveway because that's a whole other issue. He's already looked at that driveway language. But he's just saying now that the whole subdivision is going to need a waiver from this. And it's looking like that's not the case.
But the town attorney is saying that they do need a waiver.
However, I will move that the board find as fact that the three dwelling driveway does not meet the threshold of requirement for any form of waiver for this project.
I think what you... It's not just the three. You don't have to... You're talking about the two driv...
The two driveway specifically says does not require a waiver.
Where does it say that?
Technically, a four driveway doesn't even require a waiver unless they want a reduced width of the driveway.
Right.
I remember reading it.
That's 10, 20, 30, 40.
Well, it doesn't. Whether you're saying two or three, neither of them meet the four or more. So they don't meet the threshold.
I was just commenting on the way that you...
For some reason in my mind, I had the two.
But it actually talks about...
There is...
If they request a waiver, and they never requested the waiver.
Right.
So it's sort of a moot point. And if both the town...
And we can't force them to read.
...engineer and the road agent have said that they don't need any more... Anything else for that, what we've already approved on the plan.
Yeah. Because the regulation doesn't say what the waiver would be for in the first place.
Well, that's the secondary... That's the language that needs to be properly parsed.
Well, these gentlemen are here, and I know they're coming to speak about this, correct? Aren't you?
Unless we...
I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I thought you wanted to comment. Okay.
It wasn't on the thing to talk about it today, so...
I know. Yes. Could you please identify yourself?
My name is Terry Trudell. I'm the owner of the property.
Terry Trudell.
Trudell. We also went before the fire department. So as far as the safety standard, we went over all the driveways with the chief of the fire department. And his only request was to have the turnaround area on the three driveway drive. That was one thing. We haven't asked for any changes as far as the width of the driveways. We were more than... We had options with... We presented to the fire department about doing different things as far as widening. And he didn't seem like he... That was an issue with him at all.
I believe the only one that was asked to be wider was the one that goes all the way to the back one, the one where the three shared.
Right.
Right. Okay.
And also, today, we had a meeting with the DOT. And so after our meeting, they basically... We have a smaller vision to the plan that they would like as far as a head wall to the culvert. And then they should be issuing a permit within a week or so. And that's the one issue that's outstanding as far as the conditions for the board.
Okay. So then there's going to be a slight change on the plan, correct? Is that what you just said? Okay.
Yeah, the head wall.
Okay. All right. Jen?
That level of detail being changed on a plan is very commonplace.
Okay. Yeah. No, that's fine. That's fine. Okay. All right. Thank you. I think the decision that the board needs to make is... Is this fine the way it is? Or do we have to ask them for a waiver, which seems unnecessary? It just seems as if the town attorney is looking at the regulation and not... Understanding the whole thing. So I'm not sure how we should proceed on this.
I think the town attorney is seeing it as very restrictive. And I believe that our interpretation, or what we find as fact about this particular plan, is our interpretation of... You can go through and make the citation of what section, number. That's how it applies to this particular plan. It's not, neither citing precedent, nor is it de facto changing.
And a waiver was not necessary.
A waiver was not necessary, therefore...
Or asked.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I haven't been in on this discussion. If a waiver had been necessary, what would the waiver be asking for?
If they would have been asking for a waiver to reduce the width of the driveway?
The way... My interpretation of how this is written is that if someone wanted to do a shared driveway with four or more houses, it has to be built to town road standards. But they can ask for a waiver to actually reduce the width of the road by up to 20%. But to do that, they have to ask for a waiver, and the plan will have to grant it. If the planning board were to not grant such a waiver, then they would have to build it to the town standards. But in this case, they're only asking for a shared driveway that services three houses. So in that case, there is no specification that it be built to town standards. Therefore, they didn't need to ask for a waiver to have any reduction.
And because the way it services, there is... There's three houses that are going to be off this driveway. And this driveway goes way back to the lot in the back, so it almost looks like a road. And that is why... And we ask for the other two lots that are next to it to be shared so that there wouldn't be so many driveway cuts out on the main road. So the planning board, with, I think, input from the fire department, had asked for that driveway to be a little wider than it normally is because emergency vehicles may need to go down there. And there's a small turnaround area for the equipment, too. So in fact, it's wider than a regular driveway.
Wider than a regular driveway, but it has to be a town road standard...
Correct.
Even though town rescue vehicles...
Right. It does... Yeah. Right. But, you know, everybody's driveway, if they have a long driveway, doesn't have to be up to town road standards either.
So is it just a driveway? Or is it a private road?
It's a driveway.
Driveway service thing.
Driveway that services three lots.
Okay.
Well, I guess we need to decide whether we need to do anything further or if everything's fine the way it is.
That's why I made the motion I made to say that we find that the plan is in compliance with our regulations.
Okay. Do we have a second on that? Do we have discussion on that?
I have a question or, I guess, a concern. And again, just jumping in at the last minute on here. But we've got an opinion from the town attorney. But it seems like we're saying that the town attorney doesn't really have the facts.
Yeah. He's interpreting... We believe he's interpreting incorrectly.
So why did we ask for his...
Because they haven't asked for any waiver.
Okay.
A very standard practice when anybody is going to have any sort of an easement on their property, a conservation easement, a driveway easement, a drainage easement, is you actually have the town attorney review that easement language, which is what was asked for in this case for the driveways. He does not approve or disapprove, but he does review it and provides comments to make sure that the town isn't going to be held liable for something or that there's not some strange language in there. So that's why town council is typically a review of any easement language. Town council, because he does not have any authority, can't approve or disapprove. Generally, he will write back and say, you know, either this is good or it needs some minor changes to it. In this case, you can take his comments back received and agree with them, agree in part with them, disagree with them even, and still find that the condition of the approval has been met. So that's actually up to the board. You guys, I think, are trying to determine whether the condition of your approval has been met.
Right. Yes.
Do we have his official letter he sent us? I know it came in an email. But could we read it? Like, could somebody read it so we're not assuming what he said? Like, we all know exactly what he said. I know I read it once, but it's like...
I know. I read it to you, but it's easier if you read it yourself. I understand that.
Yeah. I wanted the original one.
Oh, okay.
Talk amongst yourselves. Don't wait for me.
Well, I don't know if there's... I don't know. We have a motion. I don't have a second.
To get things moving, I'll second.
Okay. And then if there's any more discussion, I want to wait for Sandra to read. So she has...
Yeah, so I... Barbara, do you want to take a five-minute break?
Yeah. Yeah.
Now we're going to take a five-minute break.
Well, okay. We're going to take a five-minute break.
Camera, bang.
Do you have to turn this off for five minutes? We're going to take a five-minute break.
Doug? Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully recess.
Hopefully recess.
Yeah.
We're not going to know. We're not going to know because the light didn't go out.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, all right, so I have a motion and a second. And I guess there's no more discussion. All those in favor?
What is the motion?
The motion is to accept everything the way that it was presented to us.
Originally?
Correct.
Right. That it is in compliance with that.
Regulations.
Right.
Right, that we believe that we did.
Right. Okay, all right. Those opposed? Abstain?
I'm abstaining, I'm not familiar enough with this.
Fine, okay. Yes. Right.
Oh, Sandra.
Sandra, yeah.
On favor?
Yes. Okay, all right. Sure, but you'll have to come up here and you'll have to identify yourself for the public.
Charlie Zilch from SCC and Associates on your behalf, Terry Trudell. The only remaining question I have, thank you, by the way, for that. Has Mr. Cowman finalized the review of the docs?
Has he looked at the driveways?
Did Attorney Cowman finish his review of the documents that we submitted, the easement documents? I mean, that's what, that was what.
That was the easements that he was commenting on.
Yeah.
The deed was okay.
He is all set with that?
Not the deed, the, no, the easements.
Yeah.
Is what he was commenting on.
Well, he was commenting on the procedure with the board took on granting the approval, but I never got any feedback as whether or not he reviewed the documents that we submitted from our attorney, if they were okay and that they're fine for recording.
The driveway language?
Yep, the driveway.
Did you get any feedback from him?
He didn't, okay. Okay.
I, I think the concern he had was whether or not the liability waiver information needed to be included in the easement itself. And the planning board, I think.
Yes.
Stated that no, it does not need to be.
Yeah.
And that was what was holding up the easements.
Okay.
It needs to be on the MyLab, but.
MyLab, right, it's a, let me notice the decision.
Right.
There's, there's something on the notice of decision saying that, that the language needs to be on the MyLab.
Right, he, he suggested that it should be on each deed.
Correct. Whether he had comments on the other part of it.
It wouldn't hurt anything, however, it, I don't believe that that was our condition. Our condition is that, was that it be placed.
Placed on the MyLab.
On the MyLab.
Correct.
On, well, actually, on recorded pages.
Right.
My experience with easements, different types of easements, I would recommend that it's always on the deed. That's where a lot of the research is initially done.
Done, right, yeah.
There is some in, there is some actually in the submitted deeds.
Do you have a copy of that right? No, it's in the office, we can't get to it right now, okay.
You'd think the easements would be on the deed, right?
The deed should reference the easement and the easement can have language.
Right, but no, but he was talking about the language that releases the town from any liability.
This is, this is.
Which is very specific language that often is incorporated if you want, say, build a house on a road that had, or on a lot that had no frontage. It's actually required by state law that select boards would give that sort of liability waiver, or, I'm sorry, require that liability waiver. But in this case, it has frontage on a road, it has access through the driveway. So having that kind of liability release would not be typical for a lot with frontage. Nor would it necessarily be, need to be in the easement.
Okay.
But the deed should reference the driveway easement, no matter what the language is.
Right.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
I believe so, yeah, so I, I just verify, I mean, I, I just want to verify that, okay, so we're all set with the easement documentation?
Well.
Not according to town council, but Jim made a motion to say that, yes, so that's.
So means, yes.
So we just tell the council that we think, well, not the word, not the.
Well, no, no, my, my, my motion wasn't on the easements, it was on the, the waiver.
Yes, he doesn't need any waiver, right.
So he's not gotten back to us with any definitive on the.
Okay, I just want to make sure because I don't want to, we do the MyLabs and we come back and this, and it doesn't meet the conditions.
Right.
Okay.
So I will shoot him off a email for tonight's meeting minutes.
Okay.
But the board decided.
Okay.
For the rest of the opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Be careful driving out there, I hear the roads are not good at all. Okay. Thank you very much, because that was correspondence taken out of.
Out of order.
Out of order because I knew that these gentlemen were here for that. Okay. Next item on, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of minutes of the March 26 meeting?
Move to accept the minutes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
One thing, did you catch the, the thing I?
Oh, I'll add that, you said, and the dinner.
Yeah, because remember when Roger made his motion to cover mileage and training?
Yes, right.
I asked if he'd throw in the RPC dinner.
Correct, okay, so we'll add that in?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second with that correction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, manifest. Thank you. Operating budget manifest, $63.90 petty cash for postage and legal notice for the stormwater public hearing.
Good point.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Yes, correspondence, that's yours. So we're good there. Oh. Rockingham Planning Commission is seeking one municipality interested in participating in this summer's road service management system implementation. You know about that?
I know a little bit about it. Basically, what it is, is we, using a Department of Transportation and UNH Technology Transfer Center, the T2 Center program can go out and effectively drive all of your roads, all of your local roads, and evaluate the condition of the pavement. And then based on what the results of that, and they do it on, I want to say tenth of a mile increments, but it might be a quarter mile increments. They evaluate the condition of the road surface. And they can, through the program that was developed through DOT and UNH, give an idea of what would be the best course of action to effectively keep good roads good through paving management and basically keep putting topcoats on. And then what would be the best process to deal with the roads that are somewhere in between terrible and good so that you can get the most bang for your buck with your road servicing management? Because most towns don't have enough money to maintain their 40-odd miles of local roads. So where do you, where should you put your money to get the most longevity out of your roads? Based on travel, road condition, and also length. So it's cheaper to do a longer road all at the same time than just two pieces and parts. So that's effectively what it is. I don't believe we're requiring any match this time.
I was just going to say, does that cost anything?
I don't believe so, and we just finished up doing this in Newington, Fremont. I believe Epping is slated for this coming year. Plastow, perhaps? It, it works really good for especially more rural communities.
Is that something that we need to ask the selectmen to, to?
The road agent should definitely be.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we would definitely want to speak to the road agent before we put in for it.
Some towns, they've had great road agents over the years and are already effectively doing what the program's going to tell you, but it can help them justify their budgets sometimes, especially to residents when they say, well, we actually need X amount of dollars to redo roads this year on a more sustained kind of thing.
Now, did the selectmen get this too?
Actually, no. However, we do have in the audience the selectmen liaison to the road agent.
Okay, hello? Okay, so maybe we want to.
Maybe we, we can ask her to bring this up to the road agent and.
Sounds good.
Find out its applicability to Newton or.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think it, it sounds like on the surface a, a great idea to.
If it's something for free, that's great.
Use other people's money and technology to get some information that could be used.
All right, we could, we can make, can I give her this? Okay, we'll give you this and you can talk to Mr. Pivero.
Even if this year isn't the right year, I think we, we plan on doing a couple of communities every year going into the future, so. Something to plan for next year if it's not right for this year.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Other, I don't have anything under other, does anybody else have anything?
RPC meets tomorrow night. I have to apologize for some reason on my tablet, I could not open the attachment with the.
They're on the website.
I know, I just, it's been a busy several days. But I will, will be attending.
Okay, good.
I'm attending, what am I attending tomorrow, Gail?
Planning Board 101? No, not even.
No, what am I, what are we attending? Because Kate's going to the site.
It's a municipal.
Oh, okay, great.
NHMA's, it's a really good training.
Okay, I'm attending that tomorrow.
Great.
For $10.
Good.
And I will move to adjourn.
Thank you for taking the.
Since we're done, the site plan stormwater regulations.
I was wondering whether we're going to.
I would, if the board is game for it, because it has the same requirements under the MS4 stormwater permit that you adopt subdivision regulations that will deal with stormwater. And what most towns have done in New Hampshire is apply it to when new roads are built. So the stormwater requirements only apply to the construction of a new road because if a new road is constructed, it will eventually become the town's responsibility and liability for any stormwater produced off of it. So you have any developer build it to these new standards so that you are mitigating any stormwater pollution originating off of it. So basically taking the site plan regulations we just worked on and applying them to a new road in the subdivision regulations. They're very similar, they're just because of the nature of a road.
The same length?
Uh, they're a little bit shorter just because you're not dealing with things like redevelopment, you're just dealing with the road and the shoulder.
So we almost take this whole thing and just pare it down to fit.
You whittle it to fit what a subdivision application looks like.
That's good, that sounds like the.
And you'll be ready to go with the MS4 permit as far as regulations that the planning board is responsible for.
Okay.
That would be good.
That sounds good. Before, before we adjourn, I had had one question for Jen the other day too, because I saw something come, that may be coming about the little houses.
Oh, tiny house regulation?
Tiny houses and we, to accommodate that, if they pass that, we may have to change the ordinance because there's, it's nothing on there.
No, no.
We have a, not the lot size, but the size, the minimum size that a house could be.
Yep.
And these tiny houses don't conform to that, so we would have to change something for that if they pass that.
I haven't looked in the, probably the past week or so, but that piece of legislation on tiny homes is actually going to a study commission.
Okay.
Which means that there's not going to be any regulations coming down on towns during this session. The way your regulations currently speak, if someone came in with a tiny house proposal, either a single tiny house on a lot of, a variety of sizes or a tiny house develop, like a cluster development, which have been proposed in some communities, your regulations can deal with that. It doesn't mean they would necessarily allow it or they wouldn't allow it with some variances or waivers. But it depends on how big is the tiny house, because they can vary. Is it on a foundation, is it on wheels, and those are treated very differently. How big is the lot? But if it's simply a tiny home that has a septic system that is on a lot that conforms to your soil standards or a non-conforming pre-existing lot, tiny home, for a building purpose, they might actually need a variance because it's the dwelling size, it's less than the 720.
Right.
If it's on wheels, then it actually doesn't even fall under your zoning regulations because technically that is not a structure.
It's almost like a mobile.
It's a mobile home, that's how it's regulated. So how big it is, whether it's on wheels, what size lot, is it on a lot that has already a full residential structure on it? There's a lot, there's so many caveats that it's hard to say when it would be allowed and when it wouldn't be, but your regulations can already deal with it.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it's allowed everywhere if you want it to be allowed or don't want it to be allowed, but your regulations can deal with a tiny home application.
Okay, great.
Do you foresee, would it be helpful to this town to take a look at that, to be a little proactive?
It certainly can be useful to evaluate what your current housing statuses are and what, what you want to allow, what can be accommodated, because you don't have sewer, you don't have municipal water. So you want it, you need to make sure that you can accommodate septic systems safely, well, safely for siting on properties and away from waterways to evaluate what your priorities actually are as a community and then see how your regulations match up with that versus some of the demands. You know, cluster, smaller homes, cluster developments are certainly something towns are seeing because it's just more cost-effective for landowners. And you get smaller roads, so therefore it's less infrastructure for a developer to put in, less roads for the town to maintain. Those are certainly much more popular. Whether or not they're done towards a sort of tiny home or at least smaller home. In some towns, that's just simply more cost-effective for people and what is in demand. And some towns, that's not the case. So with, Newton's a unique town as far as its housing needs just because of its location, but.
Oh, and you can possibly have more open space.
Yep.
With the cluster also.
But that would be a great thing to explore through a master planning effort, which you are.
I was just going to say, that's more of a master plan plan. You know, we, we do have cluster zoning that is allowed now. Luckily, that's why there's also a ZBA, so that if somebody wanted to come in and say, yes, we want to utilize this cluster idea, however, we want houses that are no more than 120 square feet. So we'd like to be able to double the number that we can put. That's a ZBA or major zoning.
Well, and then you end up with a community well and all that kind of stuff, I think.
Yeah, but that's why I'm saying, you know, cluster zoning allows for the community well and community septic. However.
Density?
It's a density that's, that's, that the ZBA would have to.
Right.
Because trying to change the zoning to allow for different densities.
Yeah, that, that would be a nightmare.
Aside from a legislative mandate, it's not something towns should undertake without doing their homework and that really is doing surveys, doing a couple of charrettes, updating your master plan because that's your guiding document for your zoning. It's not the actual regulation, but that's what should guide your regulations along with other studies and other current information, but.
Yeah, you, you have to really take a close look at schools and the impact on schools.
Yep.
Because if you have a lot of small houses and you have families with kids moving in there, you can clobber your schools.
It's true, but in that case, you also look at the.
How many kids can have 120 square foot building?
You also have to look to see who's moving into Newington and who's here.
Watch tiny house nation.
I've seen it, they're crazy.
Well, okay.
They probably, they have another show, like, one year later, they probably all move out.
Or, or how many is the.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Sandra, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We are closed.